We are on meeting.
So.
Are you going to do a report, anything? I don't have a spell. Okay. All rise.
No.
All rise.
Well, it's about Mark.
Being caused by all.
Mark.
They were immediate. Yes.
He came into our conference.
Doesn't shock me at all.
Because he was.
What's that? Keep on saying one more. One more. What's that?
He's giving the wrong information.
Please stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Grayson.
Here.
Mr. Fitz.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here. Consent agenda. Items listed on a consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none. I approve. I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August the first, 2023, the bills and payroll for the first half of August, 2023, and home rehab check, the payment of home rehab check. Uh, can I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that, Mayor.
I'll give it a date. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayson.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that not have not been identified on the agenda. But the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressed in the council are requested to limit their presentations to three minutes and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Would anybody like to address the council tonight?
I would.
Okay. Would you step up here? We do have people that are on remotely, so we ask you to state your name and your address and speak up so that they could hear you.
I'm Catherine Miller. I live in the 861 north, 3585 East Road, New York. I'm right back to. The Ozland grant. We really need to consider this. There, I have information that the lake average is 10 feet deep, not 30, not 25, as it's so many people think it is. So what we need to do is preserve as much as we can of Lake Mattoon. We have left Lake Paradise before our time, and it has silted in. You know, seawalls, no doubt. We need to do everything we can to preserve Lake Mattoon for all of our benefits, not to mention future, uh, our kids and our grandkids in the lake to fish. You provide the beach free. People can go there, have a great day. Vacation, they don't have to go off for a vacation. So we need to do this. And I hope that we continue to take interest in Lake Mattoon often, every chance we get and grant that is available to us. We need to really look into it. And I absolutely beg this council to consider each and every year to review what is attainable, what is available, and we go for it. And the residents of Lake Mattoon, we all put seawalls up. We get seal. We do everything we can to preserve our property. City owns a lot of the land in, are on Lake Mattoon, has no protection from the banks. It's silting in, it's washing in. You have no seawalls, you have no rip rap. You have nothing to save that land. You've got trees falling in the lake. You know, everything needs to be addressed, and I know it has to be addressed one at a time. So I encourage this council to consider at any time to preserve Lake Mattoon for future generations, future water source, and future recreation. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good job. Anybody else like to address the council? Okay.
I'm going anyway.
Okay, all right. That's very good. Oh, well, you gotta have some one, one. Okay.
It's nice to meet you all. My first time here. Todd Huber. I live right next to the Millers and in between the Millers and, uh, in the Hassan's. And, uh, uh, you're more welcome. You'll come by anytime. It's, it's, it's a lot of fun over there. And, uh, on the lake there. I just had one, one comment, and I appreciate your time tonight. Um, and I don't know if it has any bearing on exactly what this is, so forgive me if it's, if it's not in the, in the works there. I, I did read that there's, you know, improvements, which is, which is wonderful. I very much appreciate, uh, the consideration along those lines. The one thing I knew was, um, if there is allocation for quite a few spots on the lake for, for boats and the campground that come in, that seem to have an increasing concern over the waveboards that are, are there, the speed they come through. Um, I probably would, as a kid, probably wouldn't, uh, would, would be in favor. But now I have a grandkid and the grandbabies are out there in the lake front of you. Um, it, it, it really throws a lot more water and havoc and safety concerns, uh, than I ever thought. So thank you for your time tonight. Yes, I speak then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Right.
Um, Alex, you on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, just a moment.
Go ahead. So, uh, okay. So we're going to open the public hearing for the Ozlog grant, and we have Alex on here that's going to give us some comments, right? So we'll.
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, yeah, we're going to be talking about the open space land acquisition and development grant, uh, from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Uh, and we'll kind of present our grant overview and potential projects. So I would be the point of contact for any grant descriptions or comments. Uh, and then for the actual potential projects, I'll have John talk, uh, from Lake Mattoon. Then we'll open for council questions and then open for additional public comments. And then we would adjourn that hearing after that. And so I'll just get into it here real quick from the grant side of things. So we have the ability to apply for up to $600,000 in grant funding with zero matching funding requirement because our community qualifies for a special designation that IDNR has. Um, 100% of all funding can be for direct improvements that are amenity based. So that's like fishing piers, picnic tables, basketball hoops, stuff like that. Um, and then up to 40% of funding, and we are going for the full 40%, is allowed to be included for infrastructure. So that could be paving the marina parking lot and other similar items. Uh, and honestly, to Catherine's point, uh, considering, you know, we're hoping to look at this every single year for our lakes, and it's fully our intention, uh, you know, as far as I'm aware in my conversations with John, to try to make this an annual application, if possible, and permissible by IDNR. Um, so, you know, thank you for your comments on that, Catherine. And, uh, you know, from there, uh, on the grant side of things, happy to take any questions. If there aren't any, uh, then, John, take it away.
Okay. Do you think I have any questions with Alex at the front?
Real, real quick, if we could. Alex, you cut out, uh, once or twice in there. So just reiterate the, the, the grant. 60% has to be used for direct improvements for amenities, correct?
So it, it could be up to 100%, but we're doing a 60-40 split, uh, with 60% for direct improvements and 40% for infrastructure.
And the 40% for the infrastructure could be the seawall and the, the, the dragging of the lake and so forth. And what are a few other examples?
Yeah, yeah. So predominantly, the, the largest chunk of that is probably going to be the marina parking lot. Um, but yeah, yeah, we use that for rip rap, other things as well. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So the larger item for playground equipment at both campgrounds and the beach, we also got matching funds from the Rotary of $50,000 and, uh, $5,000 from friends of Lake Mattoon. They've signed letters of commitment for that, which that goes on top of the $600,000 grant, which includes them in all of the improvements of that, uh, that we apply for. So we have a significant amount more of improvements in quotes than the $600,000. What Alex is trying to accomplish is we want to submit the most qualifying items to be, uh, considered for the grant. And according to what they say, the more different items that we supply as improvements, more likely you'll be considered for that. And with the matching funds, even though that we qualify, uh, under whatever, um, threshold that we have to qualify for all or none, uh, the matching funds help support and prove that we have the community's support for the grant. So, uh, we're in the process of submitting bids and getting bids because you have to have an accurate, up-to-date bid for all of these items. And, uh, what we're trying to do is just figure out what, uh, is most likely going to be accepted. Now, I believe in the past, Alan Kirk, if I'm wrong, but, uh, IDNR used to converse with you on, uh, these subjects, but they're not going to with us this time. I don't think they are of anybody this year. So we just have to do our, the information they provided, uh, just submit what we feel will be accepted. Uh, I do want to, uh, continue on the rip rap. And if anybody's seen or on our Facebook, we, uh, did some rip rap this year, some very damaging areas that we had. And it's a significant improvement. And the reason we went with rip rap and not seawall is the rip rap breaks the wake and the seawall bounces the wake back into the lake. It also creates a, uh, I have to look it up here. Seawall actually creates a phenomenon called flanking erosion. And what it does is it washes the, um, sand away from the bottom of the seawall from the bounce of the waves. And at the end of the seawall, it also causes additional erosion. So for our benefit of what we're trying to accomplish, rip rap rock is a better, uh, solution. And it's definitely more economical because it does break the wake. The wakeboard first, wake boats are significant, and we have significant damage around the lake in areas, especially down by these folks' home on that side. There are several trees in that have come up from the roots. They're just literally, uh, flipped over at the rigs because they're washing the waves so bad. Well, those are some of the next areas of attack when we have, uh, rip rap available. There's, uh, depending on what, uh, the 60-40 split that we get, uh, in this Ozlog grant, we're going to do the balance of everything that will go financially to rip rap. So we're leaving that open-ended based on what they're going to accept on the physical items, construction items, uh, and try to get as much rip rap as we can. Along with, hopefully, in our budget, there's money available to do some of those things again next year. Uh, we've had significant comments and, uh, support for what little we've already done. And it's going to take years and the tanks are going at some of the city property if we don't get some of this support from the Ozlog grants to get some of these things done. But also too, there's, uh, I think we're at 1,050, uh, registered boats this year, motorized boats. And that's a significant amount of money also too. So we, we felt that, uh, 1,050 people should get the benefit of a paved, uh, marina lot. Uh, it's going to affect a lot of people. Uh, the lights that we did last year, tremendous support on that, on the safety side. So we've come a long way in two years. And if we keep this up and with the help of Alex, um, and Whitney, uh, behind the scenes of, of digging these grants out and plugging away at these applications, I believe this grant's available every single year. And, uh, which would apply for literally everything as the Millers had brought up, and we will. So without being on the Ozlog grant, the only other thing I want to bring up is the kayak launch grant is going to be, we're going to be notified soon, I think, which would be another tremendous asset at the marina, uh, along the grass that we plucked out of there and, uh, benefit the people of the lake. Does anybody have any questions for me on anything we're doing?
Other than the fact that we, we think, and I know I can speak a little bit for the council, you know, you're doing a great job out there. I think everybody would agree. And so are the friends of Mattoon. Uh, we really appreciate what you guys are doing. I, I, I don't think, this is a project that everybody's, everybody thinks, oh, sure. So I think you're going to get the support you need.
But I've been working hard to ask for and, and to make some money here. And, uh, you know, support behind it.
Yep. Okay, great.
I've got to brag on John a little bit too. Uh, he's collected over 100 letters of support two days after I asked him. Um, so, you know, there, there's a lot of support behind the project. And, uh, it came to my knowledge recently that many years ago, we did receive an Ozlyt grant previously for the Roundhouse Sports Complex. Um, so, you know, I mean, you, we can clearly see how this opportunity impacts the community. Uh, and there is one thing that I failed to mention. Uh, so we received 50% of the funding upfront for the project, and then the rest is reimbursement based.
Pretty good.
Alex, uh, one final question. On the 40% infrastructure, do you think that both paving of the parking lot and the shoreline, uh, repairs for erosion control, you think we can, that will be absorbed in that grant? Do you anticipate that?
I, I would say a very decent amount would come from that. There might even be a little bit more room depending upon what John's focus is for that. Uh, you know, how many feet of shoreline do we want to get done this year? Things of that nature. I, I would say erosion control and paving that parking lot are easily the top two priorities.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions we have for John or anybody? Yes.
Just would like to iterate on what he said. You know, it's not just the people on Lake Mattoon. It's the people in the city that can drive 10 minutes outside of town and have a wonderful day very cheaply. And this day and age, that is a big plus. He needs to know that they have a very nice place to go. And John's a big part of that. It has progressed under his watch.
Yeah.
So he needs to be committed for that. And I want to continue to always make this available, not just the people on Lake Mattoon, but the people in the city of Mattoon. Not to mention your water.
Right. Right.
Perfect.
We've already, already been invited out to one gentleman's house. So do we? Do we have his? Who has, who has his phone number? You know? I'll come out here. Roll. We appreciate you guys coming in. We really do.
Yeah. Great.
Some information for anybody that's interested. Not only does it have about the fish, but it has the lake, uh, the fish species.
You'll leave it with Susan. She'll get it to all of us.
Yep.
Uh, if you got extra copies, we'll just distribute them.
There's two pages.
Okay.
Each, and there's a little stack, okay? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Good deal. Any more questions? Thank you. Thanks.
Nice job. Okay. Any other questions anybody has, comments? We'll close the session then on the Ozland grant and go into our regular business.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2023-3260, authorizing the support and adoption of the Ozled grant application for the Lake Mattoon Marina and Campground Revitalization Project.
Can I have a second on that motion? No, second that. Dave? And, um, any other comments, questions anybody has?
When does this grant due?
What's? When's the grant due?
Um, I'm not sure.
Alex, you know when the grant's due?
He's off. Oh, he is? He's off. I think that's right. Yeah.
I think they award November 30th, too. I think that's.
I have all the information in on August 31st for it to be. That was mine.
For review. Yeah. Yes. That is correct.
And then award November 30th?
We think.
Good.
Any other questions anybody has, comments? We're ready to take roll call then.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayson.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming out.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I move to approve council decision request 2023-2400, approving the reappointments of Ed Dowd and Jim Wolfe to the Tourism Committee for terms ending September 30th, 2026.
A second on that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Fitz? You're going to do them all? Yeah. Okay. All right. We got a second. Any comments, questions?
I'm concerned about having Ed Dowd.
Yeah.
Just teasing. Just teasing.
Can we vote on these separately or? Yeah. Got a pick on him.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Grayson.
Yes.
Mr. Fitz.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
I move to approve council decision request 2023-2401, approving the reappointments of Matthew Burns, John Coin, Bernie DeBurr, Janet Snow, and Hans Warner to the Mattoon Arts Council for terms ending September 30th, 2025.
If someone else liked a second this one.
I guess I will then.
There you go.
Let me do all the work.
There you go. Okay. Any comments, questions on this item?
No.
Hearing none, uh, roll call.
Mr. Fitz.
Coming up, both know that. Uh, yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayson.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
I move to approve council decision request 2023-2402, authorizing the employment of Jessica Steiner as an ambulance bill list with a salary of $38,480 for the City of Mattoon Fire Department, effective August 16th, 2023, pending passage of a background check and drug screening.
And a second for that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and any comments, questions here?
Uh, Jessica's doing, doing great. Um, she went and got her ambulance certificate, uh, back in July. She's been with us for about three months now. Uh, we found her through express employment, and that is ending, so we're ready to bring her onto our payroom.
Great.
But she's doing a great job.
And, and we, yeah, she's worked with Brooke a couple of different times and several times. And Brooke says she's got a great handle on everything, so.
Just going to say, all right. She's done, doing a fine job from everything I understand.
Okay. Roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayson.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
I move to approve council decision request 2023-2403, approving the waiver I move to approve council decision request 2023-2403 approving the waiver of formal bidding requirements and authorizing monitor signs to prepare the illuminated Mattoon signed letters in the amount of $27,550.
To that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and any questions? Where's this?
So it's, the monitor's gonna make these, you can buy these letters, but monitor's gonna make them actually cheaper than what we'd found. They're wanting to put it over in Wolf Pocket Park on the corner there. So I guess if you were coming from the south or the west, you would see it.
Right.
You would see it pretty well. It's gonna be illuminated. Still working on the layout.
Double sided?
That would be, it's really gonna be.
One sided?
One sided, really, to be able to read it properly and everything, but yeah.
Okay.
So it's about a four foot tall.
Yep.
Letters.
Yep, four foot tall. Very busy.
Intersection.
Intersection right there on, on 45. And will be a nice little entryway or, you know, the beginning of the downtown area. So I think it, it's gonna be a nice addition to the downtown area.
Doesn't it come from tourism dollars rather than?
Correct, correct. That is, yes, coming out of the tourism.
People where to be concerned, that comes out of tourism.
Yep.
So they're gonna be far enough back, it's not gonna obstruct view for traffic?
Correct. Yeah, and it's gonna be at an angle across there anyway. So like, we do vision triangles and stuff like that. It's gonna be back to that vision triangle. So it will, you know, kind of face the southeast, facing southeast towards East Summers, empty lot there across 19th Street. So it'll be on the west side and north of Broadway, catty corner from Keith's empty lot.
Any other questions? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes.
Mr. Fitz?
Clausen?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2023-2404 awarding the bid in the amount of $136,864.48 from Howl Paving Incorporated for the Peterson Park Pickleball Court Project.
Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments on the pickleball project?
We're solving pickleball.
Yeah, just, we did budget a hundred thousand in the Tiff District on that, and we also budgeted another 35,000 on the pump track, which we did not get the grant for yet on the pump track this year. We probably will apply for the grant again next year. So, I mean, it is kind of in the budget, but yet 35,000 was go towards the pump track. But we also have money in the Tiff there that we pump track back in next year or, or amend the budget to cover the 136. So either way, it's, it's, the money is there in the Broadway East Tiff.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes.
Mr. Fitz?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
I move to adopt special ordinance number 2023-1869 authorizing a renewal agreement for the administration of the Aetna Group Retiree Medicare Advantage Slash Prescription Drug Plan, MAPD, for the calendar year 2024 and authorizing the mayor to sign all documents necessary to complete the renewal. Can I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, any comments on this one?
This year, there's a $15.45 increase per month for participants. It covers, it's just a great plan. That's all I, that's all I'll say. It's a great plan for retirees. And I would say 90 to 95% of their retirees pay the full vote. They don't qualify for any subsidy from the city, so it's still a great plan.
That $15 increase, too. Most of the other plans have a donut hole carve out or, and they're all seeing higher deductibles and higher copays than their plans. So yes, it is a $15 increase, but they have zero donut hole, zero out of pocket, zero copays. So very, yeah, prescription code.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Fitz?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Department reports, starting with City Administrator Coggo.
Busy, just lots of normal daily calls. We did have Joint Review Board today meeting with the taxing bodies on the Tiff District. Everybody was there except for the county. A representative from a taxing body, except for the county, who had something come up and they couldn't make it. It was unanimous vote to recommend it to the council to, so we've got the ordinances kind of ready that we will have a public hearing on the September 5th meeting. We'll have a public hearing, then September 19th, we will have three ordinance, hopefully, approving that Tiff District. Again, I think it's just been busy with all kinds of different things. We've got lead base, lead base paint abatement going on here at City Hall. I'd say they got about a quarter to a third of it done already so far this week. And we'll be moving upstairs here a little bit in the next day or two. And then the last part is in the fire department, which is the, the most work and down, and then in the sleeping room. So things are moving quite well and everything. It's just a busy time. So I'll open it up for any questions.
Hearing no questions. We, City Attorney Dan Jones is not here tonight. City Clerk Susan O'Brien.
Pretty much so, business as usual, dealing with personnel and insurance.
Thank you. Any questions for Susan? Beth Wright's not here. Anything?
No, I think in the mailboxes you had your. Shrinking. We have that big wide gap there, we're slowly shrinking. So I think our days of excess money might be dwindling just a wee bit. Other than that, that's it.
Okay, any questions on, on the finance? Next is public work.
I'll ask, I'll finish the maybe of the bike trail today. Steve, Todd Fuller will be shaping that up and getting that seated in the next few weeks. Bartels started working sidewalks on Locky F today. And we have a lot of activity going on around the depot. Police Department, talk about that, please. And follow up. If your questions, after he gives the chance.
Any questions? Okay, next we have Fire Department.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, the guys have answered 88 calls for service. Inspectors did six different inspections. They did, the last couple of years, we've gotten with the Transportation Division with the School Board and offered some training down at Dustin Salmon's Lot, first class towing. This year, we had all the major drivers and we took our smoke machine down and filled it up with smoke to simulate, you know, a fire that they would have to get kids on the bus. I heard a lot of great reviews from them. And then Justin configures cars up against the school bus where we have to extricate. Then they're also working on their advanced firefighter training. They're continuing that. We had, two weeks from tomorrow, we had three major wrecks on the interstate. Two of them were significant. We had to extricate the individuals out of the trucks. Super proud of the guys. The, the two more serious wrecks, the first one, our extrication time was 34 minutes. And the biggest problem was all those trucks are made of fiberglass that when we put our tools in and start to try to spread, move stuff away, it just splinters. And there's nothing to push against to separate that. So they ended up wrapping a chain to our winch and everything. But the first extrication was 34 minutes. Four hours later, we had an exact replica of that wreck a few miles up the road. And they were able, from lessons learned from the first one, were able to extricate him in 14 minutes. So super, super proud of them. Both of them, you know, pretty, pretty gruesome, but the, the guys did phenomenal. Also had a couple of public service events. There was a big, a touch truck out at the airport that the guys were involved in. And then the Harvest of Hope concert. I heard that there was close to 5,000 people there. That thing seems to be growing year after year. Pretty, pretty big. That's all I've got. And listen, if anybody's got any questions for me. Oh, the guys tonight, just before the meeting, we had a fire down at 305 Multry. They got in there pretty quick and it was an abandoned house. But got in there quick enough to put it out with the monitor. So that's all I've got. Listen, if I've got any questions.
Okay, Police Department, Chief Gang?
In the last two weeks, we've had 1,039 calls for service. There have been 43 arrests made. Amtrak Station, Heritage Park are big topics due to people loitering, damaging property, deprecating property, littering, other acts. We're cleaning that area. You should notice a big difference. Basically, Heritage Park, if you don't have a purpose there, we're moving it. If you're not there to walk your dog, if you don't have your kids there, if you don't have, if you're not picnicking, if you're, if you're just there to call it home, that's not gonna fly. They're getting zero tolerance stance on that with no loitering. And we're clearing people out of there. The Amtrak Station, with the assistance of Dean, we came back to locking it up due to the amount of vandalism there. And so the officers will be able to think of any persons, lock it up. And then Dean's working on a automatic unlock for when it rains, supposed to. It's pretty much it in a nutshell. The, I think Dean's also working on his, and we tried to get hold of Canadian National to get them to do something with the brush there to the north of Amtrak and also just across Broadway to the south. It's a mess. There's people living in there, camping in there, messes, trash behind, and it needs cleaned up. And I don't think Canadian National's gonna be able to get right on it like we hoped. And I think Dean would just soon do it himself anyway. So that's all I got on it.
Any questions for Sam? And Community Development, any other comments on Community Development?
No, they're just staying busy. They did issue the permits for the indoor facility for the indoor sports complex. Been making inspections out at Duncan's, so staying busy. Steve's been working on a lot of junk properties, houses, sending out notices to repair, demolish. I think 305 is another one that we were working on. So, and it is an abandoned and open one. So that is one that's probably gonna get taken down fairly quick. And had a gentleman come in today on another one, I think at the 712 wall bash that we've had a lot of complaints on. And talking to him a little bit, I don't think he has the funds to do anything with it. Still owns some mortgage on it and everything else. So I gave him a few ideas and a few people to talk to. And, and we'll get back with him in the next week or so and see how things are progressing. So.
Any questions for Kyle? And next we've got by council, and we're gonna start with Commissioner Grayson.
I would like to thank the Police Department after what I witnessed a week ago tonight, 10, 15 minutes ago, for clearing Heritage Park. It's sad what they did to the depot. If anybody, I don't know if anybody saw the pictures, but I did go down and look. It's pretty sad when we have to do that. But I do wanna give a shout out to, and on working with issues that are going on, just for the downtown area, trying to make it safer and more pleasant for the people to come to Mattoon.
Very good. Any questions for Commissioner Grayson? Next would be Commissioner Fitz.
Great work on the bike path. It looks great for the crews. Like Dean said, it's all finished up structurally. They're gonna do some seating and stuff, but man, it just connects it all. Nice job out there. Great work in the, for parks and also public works on the Harvest of Hope setup and everything. What a great event. Good to see that for the community and the visitors in the community. And I just can't stress enough how. With Royal King, put that on. It's a good, good event. So that's all I have.
Great. And any questions for Commissioner Fitz? Start. And then next is Commissioner Clausen.
Just a few things, again, on the Harvest of Hope concert. Yeah, tip my, my, the Parks guys and, and first of all, all the department heads in this room, everybody puts in a lot of hours. There's no such thing as a 40 hour work, work week. Parks guys were out there till 1:00 AM after the concert, just picking up, cleaning up. Kurt actually stayed till 4:00. I was talking to him and doing some special stuff. And then they were all back by 8:00 the next morning on Sunday. So, you know, great job. They will be transitioning to lightworks and it takes, takes about a full month to get that project up and going. And in fact, Kurt was telling me, two, two folded guys just doing all the connecting of the extension cords and then checking lights, just roughly 50 man hours on that part of it alone. And just kind of follow up what everybody's talking about, the vandalism, you know, and the parks are not immune either. We're having problems there. And, and I think, I think one problem is, somebody will say, well, turn in his insurance claim. Well, the deductible, what, we have to get, the first $5,000 is on us. So it's, you know, it's a problem and, you know, we can, I don't know, cameras and hopefully the public self-reporting. But I got, I got one call from, and you may as well, the cleaning company at the depot, really scared to go there. Cause he, he always got employees and, you know, there's syringes and sharps. And so hopefully locking it down a little bit will kind of make that a little more safer anyway. So.
Any, any questions for Commissioner Clausen? And Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. I would reiterate that about the, the depot and thanks to the Police Department. I did, I went by there that afternoon, saw Ed and, and viewed the damage. And it's very disheartening. And Commissioner Clausen's point, there's syringes and things that we see there. So, and I, you know, thank Department Dean for coming up with a solution. I think it's probably, I think it's warranted. At some point, we have further discussion as a council, what maybe a long term or maybe a better plan. And I don't know what that is, but I think it, you know, warrants discussion is to generate more traffic and more eyes down there and so forth to where it's maybe not closed. But again, the main goal to begin with was just to minimize and eliminate the, the ridiculous vandalism that's building. So thank you all for that. To, and Chief Hill, I stole my thunder a little bit, cause I did want to mention, and I do want to reiterate here a little bit, because I hope everybody understood. You know, if you have three wrecks and one shift out on the interstate, that is a long day regardless for those guys. And then to see the severity of all three of those. But Chief Hill, I was never talking last, our meeting last week, and he was, he was going through kind of the scenario. And when you take that, that real life experience from that first wreck and you apply it just a couple of hours later, and essentially save, save the life by cutting that time down, wrecks. And, and in a very stressful and long and tiring day, I'm sure. Anyway, I think that's, that's just great work. And those guys need to, need to be committed. Good work on, on their part, and it's much appreciated. From the tourism side, Angelia was unavailable. She had a personal, personal issue and unavailable. She's out of town. But the, we should have by the second meeting in, she'll present the, the full report on, on Bagel Fest to her board and in September. And then we'll have that for the council, September 19th meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any question?
I was just saying, and they got the skyline lights up on the buildings.
Yes, thank you. I forgot to mention that. So yeah, very exciting. Just another, another amenity addition improvement to the downtown area that I think people are really just going to love and draw more people down, downtown and, and. Your situation aside, enjoy the downtown area. So, thank you.
On my side, I did attend and chair the Joint Review Board meeting today. Kyle already reported on the results. I think that, that at least the taxing bodies and one independent citizen that was there, I think a lot of support behind that project, or at least appears to be from that group. It was informative, I thought. Commissioner Clausen was able to attend, but it was, it was a very informative meeting there. Had several calls on issues like sidewalks and also vandalism. I do think that on the vandalism issue and, and a couple of other things, some of the homeless issues, there's a lot of people working together for some solutions to these problems. And there's not one single solution. But I see the department heads, number one, all working together to solve this. And, and I think we're gonna see some positive results from what's going on. Doesn't happen overnight, but I think we're gonna see some positive results there. Property cleanup issues, talked about some of those liquor ordinance. All phases of Emerald Lakes Sports Complex or Center is, is moving along as planned. I, I think that if you look at the calendar of events that we have to do, it seems to be. That's as a result of a lot of hard work and planning on that issue. So that's all I have. I don't know if anybody has any questions of me, but I think things are going in the right direction for sure and have been for a while.
Quick thing, I do, neither one of you guys mentioned that national night out at the First Southern Baptist Church. It looks like you guys had a good turnout for being the first ones here, so.
Yeah, I got a couple of, completely forgot about that. Couple, several call, comments.
Would anybody like to make any final motions that you can think of?
Mayor?
I'd like to make most adjourned.
Second to that, anybody? One more chance.
I'll second.
There you go. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Grayson?
No.
Mr. Fitz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.
Meeting.